November 13th, 2017. If you could list in attendance the members that are in attendance. Peter is out, so for anything tonight, Dan would be taking his place on that. Let's see. Let's just get the minutes out of the way, why don't we do that first? Williams Minute Meeting for Monday, October 16th. Yes, the one. Anybody have a chance to read the sonor, see any changes, deletions, or additions? All those are all the motions for all the presumed meetings. Do I see any problems? Okay, I'll accept the moment. Motion to accept the minutes of October 16th.
Motion to accept the minutes for October 16th.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been motion and second to accept the minutes of Monday, October 16th, 2017. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
5-0-0, get in. Bingo. That proves this one too. She was so good.
One more tweet.
Thank you so very much. Okay, minutes done. Letter from the Building Inspector, 1016, to David Jakowitz, as of by right use, 324 Montpontzett Street. Thank you. October 16th, 2017. Mr. David Jakowitz, Chevelle, Krems, O'Connor &amp; Jakowitz, LLP, 141 Tremont Street in Boston, Mass. Dear Mr. Jakowitz, in response to your request dated September 26th, 2017, for determination best on in as of right use proposed at 324 Montpontzett Street Halifax, map plan 63 lot 12 via the Dover Amendment, Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 3. In my opinion, this proposed use would qualify under the Dover Amendment and that the town's dimensional requirements cannot be imposed. This office has not yet received any building, structural, engineering, site, plans, or any other information pertaining to requirements of this office or any other boards of the town of Halifax, and this determination is for the zoning purposes only. Sincerely, Robert Picarelli, Building Inspector and Zoning Enforcement Officer. Okay. Do you know anything about that other than...
Basically, a company, I think by the name of Benson, they want to own, or they want to buy land to open a mental health facility.
324, where are we talking?
324 Montpontzett Street.
The little cottage.
They want to knock it down and rebuild.
Little red building, set back, is that next to me is? What's that one?
324 Montpontzett.
Is that the...
324.
324?
Yeah.
Is that where me is is?
It's 320, my uncle. Well, the other corner, where that guy memo is.
Oh, yeah.
That's 320.
Next to him, isn't there a little red house?
Oh, uh...
324 Montpontzett Street Halifax.
What's her name's house?
Margaret.
Margaret. Logan.
Here's a map of 324 Montpontzett Street, Halifax, Massachusetts, 02338.
That's why God made Googler.
See where it is. I'm not familiar with it.
It must be.
Yeah, it is.
Because his is for sale also.
Yeah.
So it's right, you know, right next to the one.
Yeah.
So she's got to either be 322 or 324.
Yeah, 320 then, 321.
Oh, okay, good to know. All right.
And listen, it's right next to the other two.
Yeah, between the land, the lot there between?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I'm ready. We'll see what happens. There's no application per se though, right?
No.
All right. Old Colony Plan Number 2, Old Colony Plan Council Agenda, 1025, 2017. It's just their minutes. You guys, if you really want any, you can look through it if you'd like. Municipal Vulnerability and Resilience Planning. Wow. Okay, this is that man. Damn. Okay, that's available if you guys want to look that over. Okay, Colony Memo from Charlie Sealy, 102417.
That's the one I sent...
Land Use Council.
...emails, just in case you had anything to add to it.
Regarding Land Use Council. The Board of Selectmen is reviewing whether to retain the town's current Land Use Council, Deutsch Williams, or to change firms either, wow, MyYares, M-I-Y-A-R-E-S, and Harrington, or Kokelman and Page. The Board interviewed all three firms on Monday, October 23rd, and will likely make a decision about this matter at the Board's meeting on Tuesday, November 14th. The Board is accepting comments, questions, recommendations about all three firms in preparation for a possible decision on November 14th. Especially relevant are any projects or issues that your Board or Commission may have worked on with one or more of these firms. Please provide the information to the Board no later than Monday, November 13th. I actually, well, it's like been asked me candidly, you know, what I thought about, you know, legal representation with Deutsch Williams or whatnot. I said, speaking for myself personally, I haven't had, you know, any major problems or anything. I think that, what's her name?
Teresa Solan.
Sol.
Solan.
Solan, yeah.
I think she's very good. I think she's exceptional. I don't know, I didn't, how do you guys feel?
First of all, we had the meeting with, she explained to us about the...
Yes.
Yeah, she's very good.
I thought she was very enthusiastic and all, genuine. How about you guys?
Same thing, yeah.
What about, I'm so good with names. What was the other gentleman's name that came to our meeting?
Oh, um...
Rich Huxham.
Yeah.
What is it?
Rich Huxham?
Yes.
Thanks.
What about Mr. Huxham?
He's from Deutsch Williams, right?
Right. I thought he was okay, you know, I thought he's very efficient. He doesn't have quite the personality than others, but that, you know, that's his personality, you know? But I thought he was very thorough, very knowledgeable, and...
What's the reason for a change anyway?
I don't know. Just, is there a reason for one? They would just review it. Just get in the opinions of the town boards. I don't, I can't honestly say there was anything that'd say, oh my goodness, I wish we had somebody else, or anything like that, you know? I thought, yeah, exactly. All right, thank you. Letter from Building Inspector, 11217, to Fam Family. Cease and desist for non-compliant apartment, 395 Plymouth Street. Town Fam, Adam Street, Milton. My Fam, Walnut Street Ave. in Tolston, California. Another one in Dorchester, and the Fam Family in 395 Plymouth Street in Halifax. Dear Fam Family, this letter... This is from Mr. Picarelli. This letter is to inform you that after an onsite inspection with you and your representative at 395 Plymouth Street on October 30th and October 31st, 2017, this office has determined that an unpermitted non-compliant apartment is being used and occupied in the pool cabana at the rear of the property. Under 16718 enforcement, you are hereby given notice that you are in violation of Section 1677A, Schedule of Use Regulations, Section 16710B, General Density Regulations, Section 16712E, 7 accessory building or structure, the 16719 building or use permit, and 16720 occupancy permit of the zoning bylaws. You are hereby ordered to cease and desist such non-conforming use at the property within 30 days of this date of this letter. You have the right to appeal this notice of violation of the zoning bylaw and order to the Zoning Board of Appeals under Section 16721, Board of Appeals, Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, within 30 days of the date of this notice. Violations of the Code of the Town of Halifax zoning bylaws are punishable with fines up to $300 per day with each passing day constituting a separate offense as per Section 16723. Such fines will be administered through the Clerk Magistrates Office at the Plymouth District Court. Thank you. Robert Picarelli, Inspector Building, Zoning Enforcement Officer. Okay, 395. So, 395. That's going to be around the Cowwash maybe?
What's this one here, 399?
4...
No.
199.
Yeah, across the street's 500, so it's further down.
Probably at the farmhouse.
Oh, is that what it is? Is there a pool back there? It's, that's exactly what it is. It's the, it's the pool across the street from the Cowwash. Okay. Good to know. All right, have we received any kind of application or anything from them?
No, not that I know of.
Well, this was sent out November 2nd anyway. Okay. Written comments, I'm sure that will... Deutsch Williams, Notice of Voluntary Dismissal, Zoning Board. This one.
Thank you.
Privileged document, attorney work product. Robert Gaynor, Chairman, Town of Halifax Zoning Board of Appeals, 499 Plymouth Street, Halifax. Regarding Scott M. Clausen versus the Town of Halifax, Zoning Board of Appeals, Robert Gaynor, Casia Mizarella, Peter Fassellin, Robert Durgen, Gerald Ford, as they are members of the Board and not individually, and Jennifer R. Harmon, Land Court Civil Action Number 16MISC000590. Dear Chairman Gaynor and Board Members, congratulations. Good to know. A good start. Enclosed herein, please find a copy of the Notice of Voluntary Dismissal that was entered on the docket in reference to the above entitled action on November 3rd, 2017. With the filing of this notice, the matter is now closed. Should you have any questions regarding the foregoing, please do not hesitate to contact me. I hereby certify in this state true copy of this document was served by first-class mail, Kimberly M. Solan.
That's where the dogs, right?
Jennifer Harmon, right. Is she still there?
She's gone.
Yeah, because it says 7 Plymouth Street. Good to know.
That's yours.
Oh. Done. Okay, 710, what do we have? Ooh, we're 2 minutes late, 2 minutes late. Petitions, 871. Is that you, sir? Derek Lewis, Christopher and Kimberly Van Escone. 173 Montpontzett Street, Special Permit for an Addition. There we go, let me just read this into, into the... 871, is that what I said?
Yes.
Yes, it is. Okay. Halifax Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, November 13th, 2017, at 710 in meeting number 1 of the Town Hall, 499 Plymouth Street, Halifax, Mass., on the application by Derek Lewis to construct a second-story addition on an existing home located at 173 Montpontzett Street, Halifax, Mass. Said property is owned by Christopher and Kimberly Van Escone, Halifax, Mass., 02338, as shown on Assessors Map 84, Lot 12, Title Reference Book 35132, Page 6. The applicant seeks a special permit to continue and extend a pre-existing non-conforming use for a second-story addition in accordance with the zoning bylaws of the Town of Halifax under Section 1678A and C, Area Zone Residential, Petition 871. Okay. It's been denied for the following reasons. Your purchases from Robert Picarelli on Page 2, your project would be in violation of the Town of Halifax zoning bylaws 1678, Section A and C, which would constitute a continuation and extension of a pre-existing non-conforming use. This is a vertical extension of a non-conforming building and does not meet the requirements of 1678G exemption, therefore requiring a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals. Okay, and who's speaking on behalf of this? And your name, sir?
Derek Lewis.
Oh, yes, Lewis. Okay. What do we have for plans? This is it here? What are we doing?
We're cutting the plans, removing this section here of the roof down to the second floor platform, and then just extending the ridge line over. So we're just giving them more area for their washer and dryer and a closet.
On the second floor?
Yep.
You're just raising it up?
We're raising the roof.
How high?
Just 6 feet. We're just raising it.
And just bringing it over from the back side to the front?
Yep.
Or whatever, from one side to the other? How's that going to work with the chimney? How's that working?
Just reflash it.
Yeah?
The ridge line's going to all be the same, the roof lines are going to be the same. So everything's going to be existing. We'll raise up the pellet stove chimney, and this here is, it's just all existing.
Okay, what are you adding upstairs?
We're going to be, so there's no new floor area, but it's going to be, because the roof won't be touching down so low here, it'll be more ceiling height essentially.
Nothing's changing on the first floor?
Uh-uh.
No entryways, no porches, nothing like that?
No. The footprints are same. It's just non-conforming reply. It's something to do with the light.
173 Montpontzett, where are we?
Down by Palmer Mill Road.
Okay. Which house?
Blue, with the front blue.
Yeah.
It's got a really weird skylight, that's the kind of thing, it stands out, I'm the homeowner, so...
Okay, your name, sir?
Chris Van Escone.
I do watch your name too bad, so...
It's got like a plastered skylight. They did it for Head Row, I think, because it's so low in that low section that... It's a real old house, it was built in 1820s.
Right across the street from Palmer Mill Road?
Yeah.
Basically, it's the next house over, way across the street from Palmer Mill Road.
The one with the chickens?
Yeah.
Did you wish to play a plot plan or anything?
Um, I just don't like...
How big a piece of property is it?
It's just under an acre.
Just under?
Yeah, it's probably 3/4. It's all like I get the same stuff that you guys have.
And that chain, footprint, huh?
No.
468.
Yeah, good. Could you provide one? You know, have it, or have it sent up or something, you know, so it's included in the file? So we have it, I mean, this is great, this is awesome. But if you could have a plot plan, just so we know size and dimension. Anybody have any more questions?
How many, that little porch, 7 addition?
That's not going to happen.
That's not going to happen?
Not going to happen.
Where is that?
The house is too close to the Palmer Mill Road.
Looks pretty horrible, I guess that could do it. On the roof line, when you were looking at the right...
Oh, this one here?
Yeah.
It was just a thought of adding a foyer, but we decided against it, so...
How far is the building off the lot line?
How are we going to do this without...
It's kind of like, it's...
Yeah.
I mean, are you right next to a lot line?
There's a neighbor to the, well, if you're in the house, walking out the door to the right, pretty close, but...
I think it's because it's close to the street, not because it's close to the neighbor.
What is, what is 1678A and C, you know, I've got the... I don't remember my little book coming.
167, I think he spelt it out there.
In other words, what are his reasons for rejecting it?
Because it would create extra living space, so we explained it.
Was it?
Because it would create extra living space?
But why isn't it... I guess I'm asking is why is it not...
Why is it non-conforming, probably going up? That was space that...
And it's going to be under an acre. So it's going to be less than, you know, I'm sure if it was 18 or whatever it was, it could more than likely be very well grandfathered, you know, and I... Under the requirements of 1678G.
The thing is, the footprint's not changing at all.
No, it's...
You know, to get the plot plan, how many square feet below it?
Can't work on that.
I don't think we can either.
To be honest, yeah. I want to say it's just under 3/4, right around 3/4, but...
You didn't happen to have any pictures or anything with the old house and the lot? You didn't bring me the MOQ?
Like the outside, the yard?
Yeah.
Pretty cool map quest. That's probably the easiest thing.
I don't know.
Google Maps.
How does the Board feel about voting on something with incomplete application?
We didn't know what the...
I agree. You know, what we're doing is voting on distances from the lot line and whatnot, you know, this is pre-existing, but we were contributing to the non-conformity of the lot.
It's closer, it's true.
I don't think, what he was saying is that it had something to do with adding the living space on the inside, which we put in a closet. But it's, it's taken a cubbyhole closet essentially and making it into a closet.
Do you have the packet with you that, you know, that required what to... What's required for the application process? I believe it says right in there, a certified plot plan or plot plan... Should be in there as part of the requirement.
Sure it is.
See that chain, the top that...
Right, that is, that's true. But I do believe too that on the application, in order, at the town court to accept an application, it's going to be a complete application. If there isn't a plot plan in it, I don't know, let's, I'll go around the table. How do you guys feel?
I'd like to see a plot plan with dimensions.
Jerry?
It's typical, it's not, it's not a big request that should be included.
Do you know anything?
I need more information.
Yeah? You always said with it or...
No, I need a plot plan so we know where it's going.
Well, that's the problem. You need a plot plan, and needs to be a complete application. What I'll do though, is I'll, I'll ask for continuance so that we wouldn't actually vote on it, in which case it could be turned down, which it'd have to reapply and whatnot, but why don't we continue until the next meeting, and then you provide the necessary information so we could vote on it? You worked in, you're the contractor? Have you worked in town before?
I've worked in town, but I've been handing that stuff around here and pulled a big permit for, you know, anything like that.
Yeah. Yeah, well, there is a definite, you know, requirement for the completion of an application and for us to really review on it. I'll accept the motion to continue the petition number...
If we continue, what do you think of an onsite, just to kind of save them some time? Do we want to do an onsite?
He had mentioned that he would, he wanted to go and walk.
He did?
Yeah.
As in, Mr. Picarelli?
Yeah.
Why don't we do that? If you'd like to do one, we can do that and have it all done out of the way for next meeting, and then if it's, if it's all done, we can just vote on it in the December meeting. How about you? Feel like you need one? A onsite?
Or even wait it or...
Or you can wait it, I don't, I'll accept the motion from the Board, any of the members?
If you provide pictures of the property with, you know, and plus the plot plan, that should be sufficient, huh?
Unless you guys want to...
I won't hold off until we see the plot plan too.
Okay.
Oh, here we are, well, and it's something that we don't know where the property lines are, you know? You need to find out where the property lines are. How close you are to any neighbor?
Just continue.
On this side?
Just continue?
On either side, you know?
All right, then I'll accept the motion. If someone wants to make a motion to continue it until December meeting, December 11th?
I'll make a motion to continue petition 871 to the December 11th meeting?
At which time a complete application will be provided to the Board?
Until which time a complete application will be provided to the Board?
Okay, do I have a second?
A second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
So continue it until the next meeting?
All right.
If, to be on the safe side, if you want, when you put all that together, if you could contact Alana, and she'll go through it with you, make sure all the ayes are dotted and the t's are crossed. Because if, if they're not, you know, put the result in a negative vote, you don't need that. Okay? Thank you, sir.
Do you guys mind just signing that, the signing sheet there?
Sure.
Thanks.
All right, where are we? Pay the bills, what do we got for bills?
We have...
Okay, the next one, 121117. Okay, the next order of business is an in-law apartment renewal, petition number 560, by Paul and Deborah Socia, 189 Montpontzett Street in Halifax. The application here for renewal has been submitted to the Board. Section 1 owner of property information, Paul and Deborah Socia, 189. The questions, the owner's continuance. Please answer the questions with a little accuracy. Note if your answer is no to any of the questions from Section 2, you must explain in writing the reasons. The owner continued to occupy either the principal residence or the in-law apartment. The answer was yes. The principal resident and the in-law apartment continue to share major utilities. As stated in the original decision, the major utilities continue to be... The answer was yes. There have been no changes made to the in-law apartment since the last renewal and the original granting of the original special permit. There was no changes. The persons who are related to the owner occupancy of the existing single-family dwelling is related by either blood or marriage. Okay, so when they said no changes, there were no, it wasn't changes to the occupancy, it was changes to the actual in-law apartment itself. So that thought was no changes. And did the, on the application, you said when they dropped it off, there is an immediate family member?
That's what it says, yes. Persons who are related to the owner, and they said yes.
Okay. My question is, I know we, when we were going round and round with cases in the past, we were given instruction by legal regarding any changes in the property on the renewal. And we did, I believe we did receive a letter from Town Council, or Council at the time, that if there were changes, at the way I remembered, if there were changes, it had to be re-advertised. And that's where we ran into problems up there on Plymouth Street because of the changes in the number of, you know, the dogs and whatnot. It should have been re-advertized. I guess my question is with the, with in-laws, where it's a renewal permit, does it have to be re-advertized as long as there are no changes? There's no additions, deletions, there's no...
I thought Council said any renewal, any permit should be re-advertised.
That was my question, is it...
That was my understanding.
So they have to re-advertize this?
If the... If the renewal matters or anything like that, they should be aware that, you know, there's an in-law.
Renewal.
Renewal. On a renewal, all you have...
All's we've done in the past is accept the renewal, as long as the...
Nothing has changed.
Right, the answers were correctly filled out on the thing. That's how we've done it in the past, but, you know, if we were making mistakes, it'd make no sense to continue making a mistake either.
As long as, you know, they have a family, but nothing's changed in the apartment.
Nothing's changed with the physical portion of the apartment.
And the people are blood relatives.
Correct, as indicated on the form.
Guys, Council? Being a removal, we needed the... Being a renewal, we need to be advertised.
I think we, I don't know, how's the board feel?
I'm trying to remember that, that conversation. Sally, was that what?
Kim Salin.
Sally? Yeah. I think she said it was, you could do it just to make sure you were, you were fine. Interim aside of caution, she said, yeah.
I'm asking again.
But was that for a change or a renewal? That's what I'm trying to mean.
Yeah, I was trying to remember too. I, I thought the, the problem was because there were changes, and we, and we did basically add to the special permit.
Yeah.
That that's, that's where we ran into the problem when, when it wasn't advertised. But now that you say it also, I, I do recall, you know, on the, on the caution of the safe side...
It says in the, the official decision letter, two thousand and two, occupied by Deborah Socia's parents.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Yep, but where they check, see when, I messed that up early when I had asked for the, for the folder.
Oh.
There's been no changes to, to the in-law apartment, and she, they put no changes. So there was, I, I take that to be, you know, they increased the floor space, or they put another bedroom on, or, but they were not all or something. Yes, but that, I, I misinterpreted that. Well, how's the board feel? I think basically we have two, uh, two options, the way I look at it, we can either, uh...
We have to re-advertize or the...
Well, they would have to.
They would have to re-advertize.
Right. We can either check with council and put it off till next month, or I don't know if we could actually, uh, vote on the, on the permit contingent upon, uh, response from town council.
What is the renewal date on that?
Right. Good question. Does it say when that was passed?
No, let's see.
On the, maybe on the back when it was signed? See on the, on the back of this one, it's dated.
Yeah, it doesn't have an actual...
Just says...
November two thousand seventeen.
What was the original decision?
Yeah, that's what I want to look for. The decision letter was December eleventh, two thousand two.
Really, they renewed, they renewed life so far? And the renewal was always the same? The last renewal, the, the first renewal was the same as this one right here, there were no changes.
Right, exactly. Yeah, that's true.
And there's been no changes since?
Since, other than the parents passed away.
The actual blood relative, family member.
Now they got a blood relative that's sitting in there.
Right.
Where is this procedure? Where would we look at what the procedure is in the bylaw?
Uh, I believe we've had, we have, oh, in the actual bylaw. It wasn't within the bylaw, we, we had a letter of communication, I believe, from, from Deutsch Williams, saying that this is where we ran into the problem the last time.
So we're saying that our procedure, our bylaw just says a five-year renewal, and that's it, there's no specifics about what the procedure is? I don't even think it says a five-year renewal, does it?
It, it is a five-year renewal.
Yeah, but that's all it says.
A five-year renewal, as long as everything stays the same.
Okay.
We voted on the permit, in-law apartment for, you know, for modern power, whoever that, and as long as they, you know, if there's any changes, that'll take the kitchenette out?
Yes, if there was.
Kitchenette would have to come out, if their parents died, and nobody else is gonna take the kitchenette out.
To avoid it being used as rental property, because it's not gonna be used to rent this or any other.
Everything has to stay the same, it all remains, and other than the kitchen.
But that's what stipulation we put on.
Right.
But what I'm saying is, is there something, you know, the body can say, oh, here in the bylaws, you were supposed to do this and you didn't do it? In other words, we're, we're, we should be able to have a set rule somewhere, if there's nothing there, then we could just...
We can, we can look up.
I, I don't believe there's anything there that says it must be...
I don't think so either.
It, it doesn't state that it must be re-advertised, you know, as long as there were no changes, and it meets, it had met the requirements of the, of the bylaw, the last, call it what, five renewals or two renewals anyway.
My opinion is if there's no changes and there's no requirement for us to do it, we should...
I'm moving to ask the question, what?
Yeah, yeah.
What, what can we do from now, from here forward?
Yeah. What do you guys feel? Sound good?
The same, just to make sure, yeah.
All right, and we'll, uh, because it's actually been past practice of the board, like, like Asai said, to do just that, on the renewal as long as there are no changes, so, you know, I think as far as that goes, the board itself would be safe, and we'll double-check, in fact, if that procedure should be added into the actual, uh, uh, bylaw as, as a policy or, or as a procedure in order to renew. We could, we could do something like that. Sound good?
Sounds good.
All right, then I'll, uh, I'll accept a motion to renew the permit number...
Five sixty.
Five sixty.
Petition to renew number five sixty five presented.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, it's been motioned in second on the floor to accept the renewal of, uh, the five-year renewal of petition number five sixty at one eighty-nine Mont Ponce Street in Halifax. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Pass this five to zero. Uh, in the, in the meantime, uh, if we could make a, uh, a notation, a, a memo or something, or requests to Deutsch Williams to clarify the necessity of, uh, of a, a bylaw change to include renewals of special permits specifically regarding in-law apartments, I'm sorry, am I going way too fast? I'm babbling. Uh, regarding in-law apartments...
She had a mat on hand.
That a notification of a butters would be required.
Okay.
You got it.
For, for every, for every renewal.
Right.
And that we will find out for sure. I don't think we should put in there if it, if it is required, uh, an actual bylaw change may, would be necessary, is that a question?
Yeah, yeah, and add to the, well, we need to, as people change on the floor, they have no clue, so there should be someplace where you can say, okay, this is what you do, X, Y, and Z.
Please notify the board if, if they believe a, uh, a change or an addition to the existing bylaw is required to, uh, satisfy the, uh, a butted notification. In which case we have time, and we can do that down the road if we do need a bylaw change or an amendment to, or to include in the procedure. Okay?
For another renewal.
Do we, uh, do we need to sign, uh, on the renewal, or are we all good?
We're good.
We don't need to sign up on?
I'll just write the decision, I mean, you know, the letter.
That's fine. Okay, uh, affidavit for in-law renewal permit, three hundred Thompson Street, Halifax, Mass. This is for Deborah Furtado and Donna M. Chiver, three hundred Thompson Street, Halifax, Mass. Three hundred Thompson Street, I think, uh, isn't the chief somewhere around three fifty? Trying to think of where this is. Well, whatever, we have no changes. The owner continued to occupy either the principal residence or the in-law apartment, the answer was yes. On the form that required the principal residence and the in-law apartment continue to share major utilities as stated in the original decision letter, the major utilities continue to be electric, oil, and cable. There have been no changes made to the in-law apartment since the last renewal and the original granting of this original special permit, and the persons who are related to the owner occupants of the existing single-family dwelling is related by blood or marriage, and all answers were yes and filled out accordingly. This is petition number...
I didn't have a chance to check it.
Is it three fifty?
Three hundred.
Three hundred, it's way past Peck.
Is it?
Yeah, Peck's floor something. The chief is almost like five hundred.
The chief is five hundred?
Yeah, it goes from, from the middle bar, starts at...
So it's, uh...
Like in between Highland Woods? That area.
Somewhere through there, yeah.
Yeah.
'Cause this end is the five hundreds, five twenty is on this end of the...
Yeah, and that's center's five hundred, you go, you go past like, past Highland Woods.
Could be past Summit Street too, I think.
No, there's no, there's no... Some, uh, from Summit to Highland Woods.
Somewhere in there?
Somewhere in there.
Right.
Or White Power, Donut Power, somewhere. Well, we can look it up while we're going home tonight.
Yeah. Any, uh, any thoughts, concerns on three hundred Thompson Street for the renewal of the permit?
It's still the same, right?
Everything's, they said everything is the same. I'll accept a motion to accept the renewal permit for three hundred Thompson Street for the in-law apartment. Do I have a motion in a second?
I'll make a motion to accept the three hundred.
In a second?
Second, a second.
Good motion in second to accept the renewal for the in-law apartment permit at three hundred Thompson Street in Halifax. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, what else do we have? We have the bills, the bill's all done?
I think there's one right in front of you, underneath that.
Oh.
I'll pay the bills.
I'm just gonna take that home with me and pay it without you guys knowing it, but okay. In-law renewal, upcoming seminars, next scheduled meeting, December eleventh, two thousand seventeen. That's all I have, gentlemen and lady. Anybody have anything else, do business, anything you'd like to discuss, bring out? We good?
We're good.
Good.
How about a, uh, motion to adjourn? God bless you.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
In a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.